Okay, welcome everyone here. This is my first session, a full mayor session. So try to be nice, don't pick on me. Okay. Like I said, I want to make every meeting a fun, enjoyable, and make sure we can do all the business the way we're supposed to be. Not come in here, pick on all the one, you know, you have a problem, come talk to me. Or you have a problem with staff, we have city manager here. But don't personally attack anyone, you know, in my chamber. And I try, I hope after leaving this chamber, everybody happy. Okay, not me. Compassion is number one. By the way, this is six o'clock, I call for work session and today is June 10, 2019, the first meeting of the month. Are you ready? Yes. Okay, the first item will be visitor and citizen forum. Do we have anyone? Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. You are late.
Walk or shake.
Okay, the first application I get right here, Mr. Bob Watkins. Do I know you, sir? Welcome, Ms. Watkins, smiling.
And he didn't tell you that you're late because of you, it's because of that place. If you sit in that chair, you get picked on. I can't help it, I can't help it. I got a few little things out. First I want to do is congratulate everybody, all the people that won. I brought this up two or three times from the desk. I would like to see this visitors and citizen move to the tail end where it was before, at the end of the meeting, so that people that get here late and are people that if you're sitting in the audience, if you don't have an agenda to go by and you get here, all of a sudden you find out you wish you could address something. So I would like to recommend that, that you move the visitors and citizens back to the end of the evening and then let staff, staff can comment like they're doing now. That way the council doesn't have to bother with answering anything.
Yes, sir.
I'm just gonna go down the line here. The, I looked at the agenda and there were a few things that were slightly off. The Animal Advisory Committee. When you appoint liaisons, I found out I've been saying that wrong my whole life. I can't remember how you're supposed to say it. Anyway, when you appoint those tonight, the Animal Advisory is not a liaison, it's a voting member. So it comes out of the heading of just being appointed to a, it's almost like being appointed to a board or a committee. And you're, the elected official is a voting member unless they're made chair, which was what happened to me. I was the chair, the chair does not get to vote. But anyway, that's not a liaison position. I think, I think it's, I think everybody knows, but it didn't read like everybody knows. Council, committee members and board members and commission members are appointed for the term of the person that was holding the position. In other words, place five. Her volunteers are not reappointed because they're appointed to the end of the term, which is next year. But she does have a fire services, my first fire services person died, which by the way, I forgot to mention last night, we're gonna miss Herb Williams a lot. So that would mean that Bernie Blocker is, time's not out. Crime and Prevention Bureau District, I think, I think Mr. Gannaway quit, so I think that spot's open. Seems like I had more stuff to say than that, but the important thing to me was the moving the visitors and citizens to the end. I think it, I think it's helpful to the citizens to be able to hear what's being said and then be able to address it at the end. I may come back sometime again.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
And you, and you, we had this discussion a few minutes ago, I want everybody to address you as proper. Doctors are more important than mayors, like doctors are more important than congressmen, like Dr. Burgess, is Dr. Burgess not congressman? So I'm gonna, I'm gonna be calling you Dr. Trong.
Well, you'll call me Ann Trong, Ann, Dr. Trong, or Mayor, whatever you want.
And call you when it's time to eat, right?
Yes, sir. I'll thank you. Well, anyone in the audience would like to speak in front of council on the visitor forum? One, two, three. None. Thank you. By the way. Okay, let's see now. Greg, are you next, sir? Yeah, Mr. I hate to say your last name, how do you say correctly?
Smith.
Why don't I call you Johnson? We're talking about McCullar, Meacham and Midway Roadway Discussions, go ahead.
Good evening, Dr. Mayor Trong.
Oh, my God, that's a long title.
It just so happens, the three streets that we want to talk to you, I'll start with the M, so we'll call this the M Streets Discussion. I am your opening act. I'll only be talking about McCullar, Midway, and the city engineer Keith Fisher will be our headliner. So let's go back on McCullar Street. The reason why you're here, or the reason why I brought this to your attention is I want to discuss the right-of-way situation with you and how to proceed further. If we recall, McCullar exists for, to be reconstructed. This section is between Carson Street and Weaver Street, and this is the reason why we need to reconstruct it. This is its present condition. So the current roadway is really more of a, almost a rural road. But when Hilton City was first starting out, I guess it was a low-density residential roadway. The right-of-way width is currently 50 foot and the pavement width is 18 to 20 foot. The thoroughfare plan in our 2010 Comprehensive Land Use Plan indicates that this street should be a collector's street, right-of-way width of 65 foot and a roadway width of 41 foot. In order to comply with that thoroughfare plan, there's gonna be some serious implications. However, we've gotten together with our engineering firm and we can fit a 37-foot-wide street back-to-back, put sidewalks on the south side. Got a couple of sections here to show you. This is McCullar at Carson. Here's about mid-block. The reason why I picked this section to show you is you'll see how many trees are close to the roadway. If we went to that additional right-of-way width, you would be losing quite a few trees. And then here's at the end where it would potentially tie into Weaver Street. So the differences between this alternate section that staff is proposing and the section that's indicated in our thoroughfare plan is the right-of-way width would not change, it would stay at 50 foot, which is again, 15 feet less than our thoroughfare plan. The roadway width would be 37 foot, back to curb to back a curb. That's about four foot less than our Comprehensive Land Use Plan. And we're proposing sidewalks on one side, the south side. If we go to the plan that's in our thoroughfare plan, the additional right-of-way width, 15 foot, I'm gonna guesstimate, and this is based on what Tad had the properties appraised at, somewhere around a half million dollars in property acquisition cost. That doesn't include appraisals, that doesn't include any condemnation. Additionally, the four-foot and right-of-way width, I've estimated somewhere around $310,000. The right-of-way acquisition is probably gonna take 18 to 24 months, because we'd be dealing with 13 property owners. There's 13 properties adjacent to McCullar. So it's staff's recommendation that we go with this section, which would, at the same time, give you a wider street, more close to a collector's street. Being that there's not a lot of streets that tie into it, I don't know that, in fact, I don't believe a collector's street of 41 foot in width is warranted. So I think that this section will work well for this area. So right now, we're looking for direction to see if you're in agreement, if you have any questions, or you want further reconsideration, that's what we'd like to know.
I have a question for you. When you mentioned about north side of the street, there is no parking, right? On north side, no parking, right there?
There, we could allow for no parking on one side, allow for parking on one. At 37 foot, your typical parking lane is nine foot, so 37 still gives you 28 foot of pavement, which is still plenty wide to get two vehicles in each direction.
Why don't we put a sidewalk on no parking side? Because the people, pedestrian, can see clearly more than the parking side, the kid can go between the car and across the street for safety purpose. That's my question here.
So we thought sidewalks in the south side would be most appropriate, because that has a lot more residential structures. So children, that would be using the sidewalks to get to what BISD, I guess, is fixing to talk about, would probably be more apt to walk on the south side of the street. So we thought they would cross the street less.
Then can we do like no parking on the south side of the street or instead of north? Because most of the time you will see in the morning, if the car park along there, kid will be between two vehicle across the street.
Then if we were to have no parking, it seems to me, if I'm understanding you correctly, maybe no parking on the north side?
Well, because when you put the sidewalk on the, where the parking vehicle on the street allow.
Right, so we're proposing sidewalks here.
Yeah, that's more dangerous than the one with no parking.
So the no parking.
For vision, you know, for pedestrian vision.
Right. Oh, so I see what you're saying, no parking on this side, so vehicles will be traveling on that side.
Yeah, you know, where sidewalk, make the kid or pedestrian have more vision, you know, to clear the traffic.
We hadn't considered no parking, and that's something I don't need a decision on tonight, because that's something we can just install a sign. So my main concern tonight was if council was in agreement that this would be the appropriate section for this portion of McCullar.
Okay. Councilman Wee, go ahead, sir. Thank you.
Was there any traffic volume studies done to warrant the okay with the 37?
No, and I'm not aware of any. Sometimes the North Central Texas Council of Governments does traffic studies, but they wouldn't have done one on such a low-volume road.
Thank you, Ms. Wee, and Councilman Marion here.
Greg. With these additions and updates to the street, how will that affect actually traffic coming from Midway onto Weaver and around? Because if the street is improved, I'm anticipating a lot of the vehicles that avoid that because of the condition of that road would start to use it again. That's one thing. Another thing is, I agree with you about the sidewalk should be on the south because of the children coming from school, and they don't need to be crossing that. What about those two things? Now I have one more.
Okay. So I think we're in agreement, sidewalks on the south side. The other issue was projected traffic volumes on McCullar. I don't know that we can project that, and part of that is because of such sad shape now, that my guess would be now, because of the condition it is, the number of homes, I'd be surprised if your daily traffic volume was greater than 680, 6 to 800 vehicles a day, which is relatively low. So I can easily see that double.
Okay, with it.
But to some extent, if the school goes in with that parking lot, that's gonna be a major contributor for increased traffic as well.
Yes, that was the next point, was how does this relate to, especially at the curve of Weaver and McCullar, how does this relate to the project with the school?
So we've been conscious about this and will be working with the school with the exact location of their entrance. In fact, the school's engineering firm contacted me as recently as this morning. And they're kinda waiting to see what the outcome is of this, and then we'll get together to see where the best place is to put that entrance. My suspicion is it's gonna be probably closer to the north end than in the south end.
Well, aren't there a lot of gas wells or some kind of?
Somewhere in here.
Yeah, I thought it was right in that, in that turn on the color, so.
But what you're not seeing is the school district is looking at quite a bit of property over here.
Right, okay. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any more questions from council? None. Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
All right, the next street that I wanted to talk to about is Midway Road. Midway Road is what's on what's called the National Highway System Roadway. What that is, is the National Highway System is a network of nationally significant roadways that support the movement of people and goods between population centers, international border crossings, major military installations and intermodal facilities. It was first designated in 1996 and in 2012 is part of MAP 21, which is the federal highway bill. The National Highway System was expanded to include all federal functional classification system arterials not currently on the system. So what the federal government's trying to do is look at some of these, not some, look at their whole roadway network, what they call their, it's not their roadway, it's ours, and look at it, and should all of these roads beyond the National Highway System? For instance, and when we say the word highway, I know we're probably thinking US 377, Loop 820, but that's not what we're thinking. What we're thinking is roadways that again, can accommodate, you know, large vehicles, they're between population centers. So it's not highway in the sense that we're thinking about it. But there was quite a few streets throughout the metroplex that this question came up, should they remain on the National Highway System? So the question, as Shakespeare would say, to be or not to be? And if we are, if the road is going to remain on the National Highway System, one advantage is there's various pots of funding that the federal government has administered through the state to reconstruct the road. The disadvantage is if that roadway stays on the National Highway System, whether we use federal funds to reconstruct that road, or we reconstruct it with our own local funding, it has to be constructed at federal standards. That means certain type of lane width, wider than what we're normally accustomed to, much more right-of-way, thicker pavement sections. So in short, it's gonna cost quite a bit more to reconstruct the road whenever that time comes, in accordance with the federal standards, than if we were to do it in accordance with our standards. For instance, what I just showed you on McCullar, we couldn't do that on Midway, even if we wanted to. So. That's it in a nutshell. I'd be happy to answer any more questions about Midway Road. It would be my suggestion that we take that portion of Midway Road off the National Highway System. There's still, if we decide to go for federal funding, there's still categories of funding that Midway would apply for. The amount of categories, for lack of a better term, are less if the roadway is not on the National Highway System than if the roadway was on the National Highway System. However, I don't think that's a serious impediment, being that the requirement to remain on the National Highway System is so stringent, I think it would be in our best interest to tell the North Central Texas Council of Governments to remove the roadway off the NHS. Any questions, concerns, or?
Council, what do I? Yeah, because Midway, as it goes underneath the 121 and all those areas, I don't think they meet widths, because that's a very narrow turn, right there.
And it's even worse through here, I think.
Oh, yeah, it's awful, but that's not ours.
Right.
But the part that is ours, does any part comply with the federal standards now?
No, sir.
So, so we are looking, how long is Midway for our?
2,700 linear foot, roughly.
Okay, so half a, over half a mile. So how much would it cost to do a half a mile to get it to federal standards?
So McCullar is roughly two and a half million. This is twice the length of McCullar, so it's gonna, my guess would be at least five million.
Okay, to get up to federal standards.
Well, that's at our cost to get to federal standards. I imagine you're looking at a a couple million more for construction, and then the right-of-way acquisition's gonna be quite a bit more as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, McCullar. And any more question, Ms. Thompson?
Thank you. What comes to mind with me is the property owners, and this is what you're talking about, acquisition of the right-of-ways, and how that would affect the present, there's businesses and there's homeowners through there. So that might really need to be looked at, but I'm inclined to agree with you that maybe this needs to be taken off. But I'm thinking in terms of the property owners and what that might do to some of the lots and how they're set up, that's how much would be left.
I agree with you wholeheartedly.
Thank you.
Any more question from council? Oh, Ms., I know you have question, Ms. Marion, go ahead.
So what kind of action do you need, if any, from the council?
A consensus to either leave the roadway on the NHS or take the roadway off. And like I said, staff's recommendation is to remove the roadway from the National Highway System.
Okay, so it doesn't have to be on the agenda and vote for us to agree with you?
No, it's not a formal vote.
Well, you have my vote anyway.
Okay, so I'm gonna take it that that's the general consensus of the council?
Thank you, Ms. And in your opinion, we should get out a fair deal, right?
In this instance, yes.
On this case?
Right.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Any more question? Thank you, sir. You have a, the Meacham, no?
Yeah, I'd like to introduce your headliner, Mr. Keith Fisher.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Keith Fisher, the city engineer, I think. Am I going the right way here?
Yep.
Look at the headliner does. Okay, this is Meacham Boulevard, and what I want to discuss with you folks tonight is we need to make a decision about some sidewalks. And before we do that, I'm gonna bring everybody up to speed on the project for the newly seated council members, plus the council general, where we are with the project. February 11th, 2019, we, the council approved a design contract with Volk Engineering an amount of $324,000. The project limits, they're from Beach Street, east to Old Denton Road, which is approximately 2,400 linear feet. It's an existing four-lane asphalt curbing gutter street, 53 feet wide with curbing gutters, I said. Sorry about that. The proposed roadway section will be concrete, we'll be replacing the water, the sewer and the storm drainage system. And also during the initial, when we were approving the design contract, we did look at using a bar ditch, a street section to handle the drainage as opposed to the underground drainage system. But we found that wasn't possible on this street due to several issues. One is franchise utilities, another is the street capacities of the drainage and everything. So we did a look at that, but in the end of the day, we're gonna have to put the conventional storm drainage system in. Also included in this, on the east end of the project where Old Denton Road meets Meacham, there's a business there on the north, it'd be the northwest corner, that has gotten water in the buildings over time from heavy rainfall events. We're looking at doing some drainage improvements to that area, putting in, putting in some inlets and some storm drainage pipe. It would be done as a bid alternate when we bring it before council for approval. And hopefully, we're doing our best to take care of their flooding while we have everything else torn up out in that area. We're about 75% complete with the design at this time. There's no right-of-way that needs to be purchased, which is a good thing. And where our goal is to bid this project out after, probably bid it out in September with council seeing the construction contract either in October or November of this fall. And on your, on your desk, there's a map there that, that's, I need to turn your attention to, that it has sidewalks on it. And this is what I need for some guidance on. Currently in, in blue is existing sidewalk that's out there currently. The, hence the word existing, sorry about that. The, if we, any of the sidewalk that's out there, if we tear it up during construction, we'll obviously be putting it back. The red lines are proposed sidewalk, that's, that's gaps in the sidewalk that we're proposing to build as a part of this project. And the green is on the east side of the project, which is sidewalks that we think can be deferred till those properties are developed and not put them in with this project, because technically they do not go anywhere at Old Denton Road. At the, on the west side of the project at Beach, there are some sidewalk networks to the north, and so that makes sense to build those sidewalks to that area. But on the east side, Greg and I both think that we just need to defer that until they're, till the properties are developed. That's the decision point we need to discuss tonight. The other thing is, we are gonna be meeting with the stakeholders in the next 30 to 45 days, all the, to talk about traffic control and some other issues related to the design. So we'll be meeting with each of those entities in the next several weeks. And that's the decision point I needed to get some input in on council, is whether we do the, basically do the green line sidewalks, because to me, the red gaps on the west end are very logical. And I needed to give our design consultants some direction on this. So I'll open it up for questions.
Okay, Ms. Marion here.
This is not about the sidewalks. Could you go back just a second to the first slide on this, where you, where you talked about, maybe it was the second one? Where the sewers, storm drainage, waterline, everything, all of that's gonna be replaced as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Could you tell me a little bit about the assessment on why it was determined that was really necessary? Like, do you need to build bigger?
Yes, ma'am.
Lines?
The waterlines are very old, the sewer lines need to be upsized. And so that's the reason for rebuilding that. We don't want to put anything, we need, anything that needs to be replaced underground, we're not, we don't just say that on every project, but we put a road over that, we need to make sure that they're of good quality. And this, these are old lines, and also the sewer line needs to be upsized based on our master plan.
Okay, that's great, thank you. And then on the sidewalks, on the south side where the red is, I noticed that's where you want to, that's the questionable area about sidewalks?
Well, the red and the green both are. In our opinion, the red is very logical. The green, we can put it in with the project or not, or not build it at all. The green is the area where we, there's gonna be, I know there's parcels on the south side there that will be redeveloped, and that we put in at that time. They don't go anywhere. To the east there is Old Denton Road, and there's, there's no sidewalks on Old Denton Road at all.
Right.
I don't want to waste taxpayers' money on something that basically serves of no value.
I understand.
But if the council directs us to put it in, we obviously will.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Which, you say one of the business were affected by flood every time raining?
Yes, sir.
Which one is it?
It's on the far east, far east side. I think it's Falcon Steel, we've heard from those folks several times. And there's a railroad spur that goes through there, and we need to find a pointer, I'm sure there's a pointer here.
And with the new design?
Yeah, it's right in there. And we're gonna be, we've looked at, we've looked at the storm drainage system that's basically non-existent here. There's a lot of bar ditch drainage currently on the railroad that's grown up. And I'd prefer not to utilize the railroad right-of-way because it's not, it's, it's not well-maintained. And so we're talking about extending a system from here. And so we're talking about extending a system from here up well past this property here, and putting in pipe and a series of inlets and to handle the drainage. And we broke that out separately in the design contract as a special service, and when we bid the project, we were gonna do that as a bid alternate, so council could decide at that time based on the cost of whether we need to do that or not, but.
Mr. Brown, please.
Thank you. What about doing the sidewalks on the green on the north side, since those are already kind of developed? I'm just thinking of the people that are walking to work and that being a high-traffic area for 18-wheelers. I was just saying, would that be feasible?
Sure.
Without wasting?
We can do that. But it's staying directions, all.
I'm just saying, would that be considered a waste, being that's developed over there on that side?
Now, that, the north side of there is fairly well-developed. The south side on that, those last three parcels, they're not developed at all, except for one small building there at, right here. I've talked to that gentleman a couple of weeks ago.
You're done? Thank you, sir.
I just, I think the north side would be an idea. Just not the south side right now until those are developed.
This right here, plus the, plus the red, if I'm not?
Yeah, I would like to see all the red done.
Okay, great.
And then the north side done and the green. I think that would allow some people some safe routes to get off the streets with 18-wheelers.
That's fine. Yeah, 18-wheelers is, that's one of the reasons why we're gonna be meeting with the property owners, because we have to work through that because of construction.
Thank you, Castle McCullar.
On the stormwater, where, what fund is that gonna be used to? That might be Greg, I see Greg moving.
It will probably not, the drainage fund doesn't collect enough money to fund something of this magnitude, so I'm gonna guess that it's probably gonna be the general fund.
General fund in the stormwater.
And that's pretty common on our street reconstruction projects. The amount of money that we collect in our drainage fund pays for the drainage division.
So six dollars and eighteen or eighty-one cents?
And then a few hundred thousand dollars more.
A month doesn't pay enough to, so, okay. I just want, I just want to highlight that the stormwater fees are used.
If we were to have the drainage fun, fund pay for all the drainage work, the amount that property owners would pay would have to increase substantially.
Okay, I just want to just say that, because we've heard that the stormwater is not used and not needed, and so, okay, thank you.
Castle, you have any more question? I think this side is stronger than this side. Okay, that's good. But by the way, what you, your opinion, you agree with what he presented tonight, or you have any opposed, anything like, Ms. Ren? Everything okay? Yes, sir, thank you so much.
So to be clear, we're gonna do the red, the red sidewalk and the green on the north. That's, that's the consensus.
You see?
That's why I'm double checking.
I just pick on her and now she have question. Go ahead, Ms. Ren. Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
So with these additional sidewalks, would it still be completed by the fall?
Well, it'll start, the construction will start this fall, and it'll be every bit of probably a year-long process. So the sidewalk, that's a small part of the schedule, so don't worry about that part of it. The road itself is the bulk of the schedule, so it won't delay the project very much at all, so, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Susan, you have question? Thank you. By the way, you have any more?
I'm good.
That's it? You, any council have any opinion, any more opinion, or we just say okay to this plan, right? Yes, seem like everything okay. Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. I appreciate that. The next item, I would like to invite Ms. Katie Bowman from BISD, welcome here, ma'am.
Thank you very much for having me this evening. I'm Katie Bowman from Birdville ISD. Some of the council here have heard a presentation before about our partner elementary school, so I'll, for those of you that are newer on the council, I'll just update. In November 2018, our voters in Birdville ISD approved one of the bond projects to be a partner elementary school between Cheney Elementary and Richland Elementary. The board allowed us to acquire a 16-acre tract between, actually, Halton City and Richland Hills, and so I'm gonna show you a little bit about that this evening. How do I get it out? Okay, there you go, just comes right up, there you go. So this is kind of a big map over the area, I won't spend just but a moment on that, so you can see the project site. Fossil Creek runs between the site and the Halton City area. Let me go to the next map, which kind of gives us a little bit better view. So the school site, you can see the 16 acres is behind the Rio Vista Apartments. It's actually in the Halton City limits. It borders Richland Hills on Dreben there to the east, and you have Fossil Creek. So as we looked at this school site with Cheney there on the left and Richland Hills on the right, we wanted to have a way that we could connect the Halton City residents to this property. Right now, the only access to the property is down Dreben, so Halton City residents would have to actually come over into Richland Hills. So we had the idea of building a footbridge across Fossil Creek, so that's what we're here to talk about tonight. You can see the drop-off site, which is property that's owned by Halton City and the Halton City Economic Development Corporation. We've been here to kind of discuss that before. So here's what the bridge, just a kind of a drawing looks like that we've been working with our architects. You can see, let's see if I can get the little pointer here. You can see McCullar that we looked at earlier, so at the intersection of McCullar and Weaver, that's right now where we're proposing to put the entrance to the parking side. I think you guys were mentioning that earlier, certainly that's up for debate as we work with your city engineers. We're looking at a 42-space parking lot. The goal is for parents in Halton City to be able to drive their students, or students could walk up to this facility, and then we will have a 500-foot footbridge going across Fossil Creek into the campus. As we've been working with the architects on the initial drawings of the site, we've been looking at this bridge so that we can shift the school so the kids won't have a long walk. Once they get across the bridge, they'll be going a little bit closer into the elementary school. This is just kind of a little bit of a drawing. We don't have the exact map or the bridge laid out yet, but you can kind of see the elevation there. The bridge will be totally encased, will have a roof on it. The children won't be able to throw anything off the bridge, will have, you know, some type of a screen type thing, will have security cameras, will have lights, will have security and safety there as well. One of the other goals, as in BISD, our board likes us to have our playgrounds open for the communities, so this will be another opportunity for the Halton City families to come over after school to play on the playground at the new campus. So this is the particular piece of property owned by Halton City and the Economic Development Corporation. We've gotten it down to 5.5 acres. You can see there, there McCullar, it was what we were looking at just a moment ago, McCullar, and then the piece here. And so we know currently, we have a land use agreement with Halton City for a piece of property that's across the street from Halton Middle School that you guys have had your soccer program on for the last quite a few years. And so what we're hoping that we can do is work out an agreement where we do a property swap. There's actually 3.8 acres. Currently, BISD has a cell tower and a land use agreement with an easement with Verizon on this property. We had been looking at maybe just kind of cutting off that left side of the property because of the Verizon piece, but our attorneys have reviewed, your attorney as well, our cell tower agreement, and it looks like that we think, we have not brought this to our board, because this was a late last week discussion, but we think what we may be able to do is go ahead and trade the entire property, because this parking lot, you guys utilize quite a bit for the soccer. And all we would need to keep would be this corner piece. But we'll be presenting that idea, if you're amenable to that, to our Board of Trustees to see if they'll be willing to go that direction as well. We will be giving you the property subject to that easement, Verizon will still have to have that easement. In fact, in the cell tower lease currently, Halton City's mentioned in that as utilizing the parking lot and the soccer field, because we had that agreement in place before the cell tower lease agreement was put in place. So we're proposing that we do a property swap of this property with the property that we have. As part of that, we are proposing to cover the cost of the surveys and the appraisals. Our attorneys have discussed that we could actually do an actual swap between the two And then the land use agreement that we currently have with you, of course, would go away on the soccer field because you would own it. However, for the next three fall seasons, until we finish the middle school at Halton Middle School, we would need to utilize the property under some type of a land use agreement, because that's where our football team will be practicing until we actually have the fields completed. But we think, in working with maybe our athletic director, we would not need to keep you from having soccer in the spring or summer, it would just be that fall season when we would need access to the property for the football team. So that's one of the things that we're considering. Also, I know a question had come up about the bridge. BISD will be maintaining that bridge, it will not be a part of anything that Halton City will be required to do. I think that's all my presentation.
I would love to ask you the, you say the BISD take care of maintenance and about the bridge, right?
Yes, sir.
How about the parking lot?
Yes, sir. If we own the land, yes, sir. If we do a property swap, the parking lot, all of that will be our responsibility.
Yes. Castle, you have any question? Seem like you did a very good job, and thank you, Ms. Bowman.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
I'm glad to see you here, you know, this for safety of the kid, you know?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Why not do it? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Now, we have no more item on the work session, and Mr. Austin, you have any executive session? Yes, okay. At this moment, I will close the work session at 6:44, and now we go into the executive session beyond chapter 551 of Texas Government Code, 551.071 and 551.072. Thank you, CUS7.
Mr. Lynn. Ms. Thompson. Can you hear me now?
No.
Okay, at this time, June 10, 2019, at 7:08, this is a regular meeting. And before we do in that, I would like to ask council member Walter Crowe, do invocation and pledge of allegiance, and please stand.
Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for this beautiful day, and thank you for the wonderful citizens that are in attendance today to see this council session. Please provide your guidance and wisdom to the members of this council and in the way that we make our decisions. Also, I'd like to pray for our city employees, public works, our first responders, and the police and fire, and keep them safe as they provide our services to the city. We ask this in your son's name, Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Welcome, everyone here. My name is Andrew Trong. Most of you already know me, and I call, welcome, everyone. Hope everybody have a good day. And thank you, City Council and staff, City Attorney, and City Secretary for the meeting today. First, I would like to ask City Secretary Al Camacho do announcement and events.
Thank you, Mayor. Meeting announcements for June 10, 2019, and the public library teen programs, family movie night, summer reading program, adult GED, ESL classes, and other library activities are all listed on the library's website for their dates and times, so please check the website. Family night, they're having a Father's Day craft edition. It's Thursday, June 13, from 6:30 to 8 o'clock. Kids of all ages can make Father's Day themed crafts. The event is free and no registration is required. Galaxy t-shirts will be held on Thursday, June 20, at 6:30 p.m. You can bring your own black t-shirt to create something spacey. The event is free and no registration is required. In community programs, the Refresh BISD, Halton City will be supporting Refresh BISD for the back-to-school event on Saturday, August 17, from 9 to 12, at the Wiley G Coliseum at 6108 Broadway Avenue in Halton City. Refresh BISD will serve students eligible for free and reduced lunch programs in all elementary and middle schools in Halton City, North Richland Hills, Richland Hills, and Watauga, attending the Birdville Independent School District. During Refresh BISD, there will be backpacks, school supplies, haircuts, eye exams, sports, physicals, hot dogs, helpful resources, and a time of fun. Refresh BISD aims to help get students ready for school, families connected with the community, and people transforming our cities. Families must pre-register to attend Refresh BISD. An online registration will end July 1, and you must pre-register during this time in order to attend and to register your student online. Visit www-refreshbisd.com. STAP, which is Specialized Telecommunications Assistance Program, provides free specialized equipment devices for senior citizens and children and adults with disabilities. The date for the presentation is Monday, June 24, at 10:15 a.m. at the Senior Center, with a goal to have a minimum of 10 people per presentation, and proof of a Texas residency is required. And I have a late announcement. Friends Helping Friends needs a driver for Fridays to pick up four senior citizens from 9 to 9:30, and to go to the Senior Center, and then later, between the hours of 1 and 1:30, take these four seniors back home. You can call Fran Nally, who is the Friends Helping Friends Coordinator, at 817-946-1879, and that's our announcements.
Thank you, Ms. Camacho.
Michelle Heckathorne from BISD, are you here?
Yep.
This presentation will refer to Halton High School. Welcome here, please. Address your name and...
Thank you. Thank you, City Council, Mayor Trong. My name is David Hamilton. I have the pleasure to serve as the president. Well, Halton High School, and I'm here to introduce Jason Tucker and Michelle Heckathorne, both employees of Halton High School. Jason Tucker is our award-winning Halton football coach and athletic coordinator, and Michelle Heckathorne is our chairman of community relations. That's a little inside joke. What I'd like to say before presentation is, the presentation we are about to give, we are very happy with the amount of partnership that the city of Halton and Halton High School has had over the last couple of years. And the presentation we're about to give, I think, has a lot of the city of Halton within it, so I want to thank you all for your support for our school and our community. I think it's built a great bond between us, and it's shown a lot over the last couple of years, so thank you, City Council and members, for what you've done. Without any further ado, I'm going to introduce Coach Jason Tucker to come to the podium to say a few words, and then Ms. Michelle Heckathorne.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. I just wanted to express my extreme gratitude for the city of Halton and how well we feel supported at the high school with our sports this year. It was very evident throughout our football season in particular. The Police Department and Fire Departments did a great job supporting our players. It was really, really nice. And the city at large, it was really, really a special feeling, especially when we played North Texas. I know the city at large, there was a big reason we won that game, because it was really, really nice to see the crowd get fired up at a critical point in the third quarter. If that didn't happen, we might not have won the game. We look forward to a lot more support from the city as we continue to try to grow our programs. And we also felt a great deal of support from the city throughout our other sports as well, especially a basketball playoff run. And, you know, I went to a baseball game. Our baseball team had a little bit of a down year, but we had a great turnout at our games anyway, so we get support, up or down, and it's just a very, very special community to work in, and I really, really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome here.
I'm not used to talking to people over the age of 18, so bear with me. To the mayor, council, and all the city officials, my name is Michelle Heckathorne, and I am a business teacher at Halton High School. Thank you again for allowing us to be on your agenda. This fall, I will be starting my 20th year at Halton as a Buffalo. In those years, I have been with many students, teachers, and staff. Many of the students I am still in contact with today. Ms. Van Zant, I have had the pleasure of knowing your sweet Woody, lovingly called Woody, and it's been nice to keep up with him through you and find out that, not surprisingly, he is a successful adult, just like he was a great kid when I had him. But in those almost 20 years, what's amazing to me is the amount of community sport and spirit we see between Halton City and this city and our high school. From sidewalks to banners, which I can't help believe started the energy for our award-winning season, to all the familiar orange beards of our first responders present at our games, it is obvious that we have a partnership. Our city manager Keith Lane was made an honorary graduate of Halton High School last year. What an honor for him. We have partnered to sell Buffalo flags and banners. Our school has fundraised to contribute to the Veterans Memorial Park. We have had a Halton flag flown at the police station during our football season. The city first responders were honored at one of our pep rallies and spirit rallies, and we had escorts by police and firefighter to our games, both near and far. We also hosted a candidate forum for City Council this year, led, directed, and coordinated by our high school and our student council. Many of you I saw at the forum, and I think the kids did a great job. You all did too. Everybody I see here won, by the way. With the benefits of the metroplex, yet the size and feel of a small community, our one high school city is doing amazing things. In an effort to capsule this pride of community, we would like to present the city with our 2018-19 yearbook with a dedication that reads, "To Halton City with appreciation, Halton High School, 2018 to 19." You can read our dedicated page to our wonderful city by looking on page 197. Thank you again for your support, and most of all, go Buffs. Mr. Hamilton messed up by letting me speak today. I have one other presentation I would like to make. I would like to make a presentation to Leila Caraway. Leila is an amazing alumni and supporter, from band support to any ballgame, from car washes and car shows. She is all about being a Buffalo. A yearbook for you to add to all your memorabilia, which we know you have.
She's talking about that helmet, again.
And a football and a megaphone, but I would like to present you with a yearbook for you, which is also listed on page 197, and to start off all your fashion for the fall season, I have a custom-made of earrings with a Halton Buffalo on them. I know we are staffed with a lot of female on the council. I didn't know how many pair of earrings we had in the crowd, so if you want a pair, let me know. We will have some custom Buffalo earrings for you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Ms. Michelle, and thank you for reminding me we have more female council than male. Okay, the next item will be on the regular agenda, item number one. At this time, we have a special presentation. I would like to ask Council Madam Susan Soul present the flag to the family of one of our member pass away. Go ahead, ma'am. You can do anywhere, I doubt that. Ms. Susan?
Yes.
Before you do that, I will have some word to say to the family.
Yes.
I was saddened to hear that Herb Williams passed away. We are really going to miss him. My thoughts and prayers are with you and your family. Thank you, ma'am.
I didn't personally know, heard myself, but I did speak with Suzanne.
Suzanne.
Norris, I'm sorry, and these are some things that she told me about him. Mr. Williams was a great board member. He was always willing to jump in and do what needed to be done to support Fire Services Board objectives. He spent hundreds of hours popping popcorn for many Halton City events. Mr. Williams loved greeting the children that came to fire camp. And was loved, I'm sorry, and was loved by the many children he greeted. Mr. Williams also was an avid Boy Scout leader and very active in scouting events. These are only a few of many kind deeds that Mr. Williams conducted during his time on the Fire Services Board. There are many more. At this time, we would like to present this certificate of recognition to his wife Rita Williams and his family. The certificate of recognition says, awarded to Herb Williams. In appreciation of Herb Williams' outstanding qualities of volunteerism and dedication with his three years of service with Fire Services Board in the city of Halton City, Texas, I deem it an honor and a privilege to present his family with this certificate of recognition. His interest and devotion had a valuable and positive effect on the progress of our community and on the behalf of City Council and all our citizens. We wish to extend you our sincere appreciation for his outstanding service and contribution.
Thank you.
Well, we have to move on on the next item. We need to select Mayor Pro Tem.
No, minutes.
Minutes. Oh, I'm sorry. The first item will be minutes, and this will need an action. Do you have any correction, anything? I think you have correction, right?
Yes, Council, I sent Friday, I had a couple of details that were missing, and I resent the minutes back to you Friday in a correction on one of the appointments, and also some additional information that was posted regarding the 380 Development Agreement. And you would have received those in the email Friday. So if you want to go ahead and approve, you could just go ahead and say approve with the additions.
Okay, you all had to make a move with an approval of the change.
Yeah.
Councilman Wees.
Thank you, yes, I make the motion to approve the minutes with the changes that were emailed to us on Friday.
Okay, we need second. Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor, and that is for a second, please.
Okay, we already have second now. Please, Rachel, you vote. Okay, we got unanimous. Ms. Soul, right there. No, you say no? Yes, okay. We got unanimous approval with the absence of Council Rick Imanbrow. The next item will be Mayor Pro Tem. You go ahead.
Section 309 of the Halton City Charter states, "The Mayor Pro Tem shall be elected by the council from among the members of the council and shall perform all duties of the mayor in case of his absence or disability." So the process would be someone to make a nomination for the Mayor Pro Tem, and each, I believe what we've been doing is that you go ahead and vote on that person, or if there's any other nominations, or that, the floor will cease.
Well... Marion, you want to talk before me?
Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
I nominate Lynn Thompson as Mayor Pro Tem.
You see the majority of Lady on way one, okay. You have second? Okay, Ms. ...
I'll second. I'll third it, I'll fourth it.
Okay, we got the second now. Please, Rachel, you vote.
Lynn abstains.
Yes, and then congratulations, Mr. Lynn Thompson, you will be Mayor Pro Tem this time, and give her a hand, good hand. Okay, item number three, inter-local purchasing agreement.
Janet Carter.
Janet, I'm sorry, I didn't know your last name, ma'am.
Dr. Trong, Mayor, Council, I'd like to present, City of White Settlement has requested an inter-local purchasing agreement with the city of Halton City in order to utilize an agreement that we have with Reliable Pavement, and they were awarded a contract for miscellaneous concrete improvements. The bid number was B2019-311-001. By entering into an inter-local agreement with the city of Halton City, White Settlement would be able to take advantage of discount pricing for goods and services. And this is the Texas Inter-local Cooperation Act. Texas government code authorizes municipalities to participate in such purchasing agreements, and I'll open it up for questions.
Thank you, and Council, you have any question?
Ms. Soul, go ahead, ma'am. No, you hit your own button. How about, Ms. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mayor. Out of this, do we ever do just more than one other city, or there are other cities that combine so we get a better discount for all, or how does that work?
We do have other agreements with other cities, North Richland Hills, Hurst, the city of Denton. And when we enter these agreements, it's not for this necessarily, just this particular contract. We can enter into agreements on other contracts as well.
And how much of the savings does it depend on?
It depends on the project.
Okay, great. Okay, I'm all for saving money.
Yes.
Anyway, do they give coupons?
No.
Any more question? I have seen none, and there's no public hearing, so I'm ready for action. Councilman Grow.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve the inter-local purchasing agreement with the city of White Settlement, Texas.
Thank you, Councilman Grow, and Ms. Wees.
Ask for a second.
Okay, we already have second, and anyone have any more question or comment? If you don't, then go ahead, Rachel, you vote, please. Okay, item number three, unanimous pass, and thank you so much. Now, item number four, ordinance number 0-2019-013-15. Ms. Bachelor, welcome here, ma'am.
Evening, Mayor and Council. This is the application of Jennifer Trevino for a zone change request from C3 Commercial to SF1 Single Family, locally known as 5613 Midway Road. The applicant requests to rezone the subject site in order to rebuild a home on the site of their current residence. The existing home on this site is considered a non-conforming use. Without the zone change, the applicant would not be permitted to reconstruct a new residence on the property. They would only be able to maintain what is existing. On May 28, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval. And if we look at the screen up here, this is the property just west of Thomas Road. If you look at the club, it is here in the yellow. This is facing north from Midway, facing west, south across the street, and to the east. According to Tier and Appraisal District, the current residence was constructed in 1946 and is approximately 1,467 square feet. Available for any questions, and the applicant is also here.
Okay, Council, you have any more question? Yes. Council, Lady Hillier.
Glenn, I noticed that this is SF1, and there's already a home on there, and according... And there's already a home on there, and according to the documentation, after the new home is built, the old home will be demolished.
Demolished, correct.
What is the process for planning and zoning to make sure that that occurs, the demolition? Do we follow back on it, or inspectors?
Yeah, even if they weren't to build a new one, it would make their current residence conforming.
Right, but if they do build a new one and don't demolish this, now it's an if it's.
That would not be an option because it's not a duplex zoning, it's single family.
And that's my, I understand that, I'm just asking, what is the process to ensure that the second residence is not there?
It would be a requirement of the building permit for demolition of the original structure before we would do a building final.
Okay, but is there an inspection of all of that afterwards, or do they have a certain period of time after the new one is built?
Building permit is good for six months, and they would not get a final on the new construction until the existing residence is there, is demolished, it would be part of the final.
Okay, that was my question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, and Ms. Venzence?
Yes, I'm curious. I remembered, I'm curious if the lot, when you had the north view up, I'm curious if the lot to the right of that or to the east, is that also owned by the homeowner?
No, that's a separate lot of record that was rezoned, it belongs to Harder Electric to the east of there.
Uh huh.
That was rezoned to commercial. So the adjoining property to the west is what's triggering the ability to be single family.
Okay, and I did notice, it is a beautiful rendition of a new home. Want to just go on record saying I'm so grateful, somebody would like to stay in Haltem and upgrade. Very grateful for that.
Yes, and they're wanting to move in there, I believe it's her parents.
Excellent, I did see that it was a circular drive, is that correct? Okay, and then with that, I was curious, because the house will be so far back from the street, I was curious if there was landscaping planned for the front of that lot.
Welcome here, ma'am, please state your name.
Jennifer Trevino. And we were planning on doing the drive in front of the house, like, attached to the house driveway instead of the metal that we have now, and just have a circular driveway in front of it, kind of going through with the driveway, if that makes sense. It does. So, yeah, the landscaping would be in the middle of that, like, in the middle of the round, roundabout.
And what, was I seeing that it's for four cars to be parked there in the front?
Well, that was, I was just trying to get an idea of the width-wise, since we haven't actually done the official layout yet, that was the one that I did. We haven't gone and gotten the official one brought over yet, but basically, I would, that's what I was planning, since we already have three vehicles, and if my parents were to come, then it would be four. But to leave enough room to pass around the other, so basically two cars width in front and then the length.
You did a great job on it, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Venzence, now, Madam Mayor Pro Tem?
This is for Ms. Bachelor. Okay, I noticed that you have indicated there were no, no responses as far as in favor or objections or anything.
Correct, no mail return regarding anything.
Okay, and with her already living there, any issues or anything would not be a surprise to the family as, because they're not really changing anything, but just making a new home and demolishing the old. So they're used to the area, so there would not be any additional surprises.
Correct, her parents lived there prior to them getting possession.
Right, okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, and no more from Council, this is a public item. So I would like to open the public hearing at 7:36. Anyone in audience would like to speak, maybe comment, against, or favor, anything? I see none, so I close public hearing at 7:36 in half. Okay, by the way. Do you have any more question, Council? If you don't, go ahead, Gresha, you vote. Oh, Ms. Wee? Okay, go ahead. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. As a matter of ordinance, O-2019-013-15, also Z-004-19, and regarding the property at 5613 Midway, make a motion that we approve the zoning change from C3 to SF1.
First reading?
First reading.
Okay, thank you, now any second? Ms. Walter?
Ask for a second.
Okay, we got the second, any more comment or question from Council? You don't, go ahead, Gresha, you vote, please. Okay, item number four, unanimous approve. Now we move to number five. Okay, this honor number O-2019-014-15, Ms. Bachelor again.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is the application of Mark Miller for a conditional use permit for contractor's office with shop and garage in the C3 Commercial District, locally known as 4207 Broadway. The applicant has a remodeling company, they serve multifamily and residential properties in DFW. The list of services they provide are painting, sheet rock, carpentry, framing, make-ready, welding, carpet cleaning, and housekeeping. They intend to store leftover materials in the warehouse along with the tools for everyday use. The applicant intends to store trailers and other work-related materials in the fenced area in rear, behind the building. Hours of operation will be Monday through Friday from 8 to 5. On May 28th, 2019, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval with the following conditions. Outdoor work vehicles and trailers will be allowed on an improved surface being asphalt or concrete behind the main structure and enclosed by a privacy fence that is existing or panel with a trim cap. Personal vehicles shall not be permitted to be stored outside of hours of operation. A little history on the property, it was constructed in 1999. The first CO was in 2000 for England Plumbing, and in 2004 for GIC Landscape Management that just recently sold, vacated and sold. This is the property right here. This is their site plan showing, this is the front parking lot, there's a gate across here. This is concrete, and this is the warehouse portion. They're proposing to have trailer parking behind the building. It's a minimal concrete currently, they'll need to expand that to be able to have the maneuvering area. This is the front parking lot, on the exhibit, it's proposed that the dumpster enclosure be relocated behind the build line instead of being in the front yard setback. This is the gate going to the fenced area, which, when the gate is closed, it will be screened for public view. As you can see, there's concrete to just past the edge of the warehouse. This is not deep enough to park a trailer or company equipment on, so they'll need to expand that. That would be a question you would want to ask the applicant. This is looking from the northeast corner of the property. Walking back here, this is kind of asphalt shavings, it's not compacted down or emulsion sealed, seal coated. And one other point of concern is, this is a gate at the corner of Doyle that has a concrete approach going to it, but there's no maneuvering through the gate. If they propose to utilize that, we would want to make sure there's maneuvering into the yard. Otherwise, make that a solid fencing instead of the gate. If you have any questions, I'm available, and the applicant is also here. Oh, and Walter? There were two in favor, no objections, one opposed with no comments, and one returned to sender.
Thank you.
Councilman Gro, oh, you already got?
No, um, do they, I guess it's for the applicant also, do they intend to use that gate, or is that?
That's the unknown.
That's the unknown, so I guess we'll find out.
Any more question from Council? Okay, you have no more question?
Well, I guess it's for the applicant, so are they going to use that gate?
Hello?
How you doing?
Good, how are y'all?
Doing great.
So I'm Mark Miller.
Okay.
And no, don't plan on using it.
Okay, so you'd be amicable on sealing that off?
Yeah, if you could seen in the pictures before, that used to be a landscape company there, so it's massive boulders. So once we actually could put stuff there, I plan on moving them and blocking that gate completely, so it's not usable.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any more question from Council? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Now, at this time, 7:42, I open public hearing. Anyone in audience would like to speak again of favor of the item number five? Go ahead. Okay, I am closing the public hearing at 7:43, thank you. By the way, do you have any more question from Council? If you don't, go ahead, Gresha, you vote, I'll take action, make a motion. Walter Gro, Ms. Gro, Council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve ordinance number Oscar-2019-014-15, also known as Charlie Uniform-003-19, first reading.
Thank you, we got the second, you have any question? Ms. Thompson?
And along with the same stipulations that were made regarding the, what P&amp;Z wanted, and also making sure that that Doyle gate is inoperable.
Okay, Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, that would be for a second, Mayor.
Thank you, we have the second now, please, Gresha, you vote, if you have any question or comment from Council? Okay, item number five, unanimous pass, and now we move to item number six. Interlocal agreement with City of North Richland Hill for review and approval of BISD's school site. Anybody want to make a motion? Go ahead, Councilman Gro.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we table item number six, I guess, until the next council meeting. And so, city staff can negotiate with Richland staff on the impact fees and how all that's going to get worked out.
Thank you for making a move and explanation, we need second, Ms. Thompson?
That would be for a second to table the item, please.
Okay. Do you have any more question or comment? If you don't, go ahead, Gresha, you vote, please. Okay, we go ahead, table item number six, and unanimous approval by City Council, thank you. Now, the number seven, sell or exchange of city properties. And, is the city manager? No, okay, any Council? Yeah, okay, we need to hear from Council about this item. Councilman, please.
I have a motion for it, if you like, I think the.
Okay, before I make motion, do you have any other Council comment? No, sir, go ahead, sir.
On regards to the agreements that we got going on, I move that we authorize the city manager to obtain the appraisals and survey of the city properties for purpose of the school pedestrian bridge.
Thank you, sir, now we need second, Ms. Lynn Thompson?
Mayor, that would be for a second.
Okay, we got the second now, please, Gresha, you vote, if you have no comment or question? Go ahead. Okay, item number seven, unanimous pass, and now we move to item number eight, Pecan Park and Buffalo Ridge Park Restrooms. Hi, Kristy, how are you, ma'am?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Come before you this evening, we have in our current fiscal year budget the funds available to purchase restrooms for some of our parks. We just recently purchased a restroom for North Park, very nice restroom, finished out nicely, all prefab, stainless steel fixtures. We're real excited about restrooms in our parks. This is exciting stuff. So we are looking to use the same contract, which is Sourcewell, so we do not have to go through the competitive bid process. And so we can have consistency in what our restrooms look like in the parks. We've been very pleased with the product and with the company CXT that we have worked with. So we are coming before you this evening. The restroom at Pecan Park, there's currently not a restroom facility there, so this will be the first one. It is in the amount of $61,492. And the second restroom would go at Buffalo Ridge Park. If you're not familiar, there's currently a pavilion with a very shoddy one-holer for men and women on each side attached to the pavilion, it's very, very old. So we are looking to add a very large facility that would help service also the Haltem City Girls, or Haltem High School Girls Softball. They have a ton of folks that come through for the games there. This would be a very large restroom. The dollar amount there is $160,850. So we are looking, again, the funds are available, they were approved in the current budget through our capital improvement fund, and we are just recommending, Council, to please approve the use of Sourcewell to purchase these restrooms through CXT.
Okay, the $160,000 here for both park, right?
No, that's for the one at Buffalo.
Buffalo only?
Yes, sir, and then $61,492 for Pecan, that'll be a much smaller unit.
You know, many of I were the Council member, and I Onway won restroom on all city park the best we can, we all human.
Yes.
We need, that's so important.
We are working on it.
Yeah, a lot of people say I need the trail, I need anything, but this is number one, thank you, ma'am. I appreciate that.
We're going for it, we're going for it, trying to put nice ones in there for you, too.
Well, seems like everybody enjoy, especially Mrs. Steve Venzence. I think he opposed more than anyone else. By the way, we need, Ms. Lynn Thompson, go ahead, ma'am.
Ms. Pruitt, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Where would these bathrooms be located? Will it be beside the front sign?
Hopefully not.
Thank you.
Pecan Park will be a little closer to the front than I'd like, but based on where the sewer and water lines are, we do have to place them in particular places. Buffalo Ridge will be set back a little further, and these are really nice buildings, I should have brought a picture for you guys. They have a stone bottom with a cedar shake roof, they're painted very nicely. They do not look like our standard cinder block building restrooms. They're a nice upgrade for the city.
Okay, and just a small little question, will we have some kind of low-impact shrubs or something to go around, just to?
Yes.
Give a little tasteful?
Yes, ma'am, we can absolutely do that.
Application to our city?
No problem.
Okay, well, in that case, I'll probably go along with you.
Okay.
Okay, just not by the front sign, please.
No, ma'am, no, ma'am.
Councilmember Susan Saul?
Thank you, Dr. Trong, Mayor Trong. My question is, is the Buffalo Ridge Park restroom, is it going to be where the current facility is, or are you going to build a whole new building for that?
We're going to do a whole new building. These buildings actually come completely prefab, it's really a pretty cool process. Our Public Works Department is graciously volunteering to do the slab and all the pre-work. We bring in plumbers and electricians to plum out everything and put the lines in, build the slab, and then the company brings in, CXT will bring in on a crane in a huge truck and just drop it right on top of the slab. And our folks will come in and make the final connections. It will be not far from the current restroom at Buffalo, there's a triangular piece of grass that's closer to the girls softball field, and so it'll be very close. We're hoping to eventually remove the old pavilion building, much nicer pavilion and restroom facility, yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
We're upgrading, we're upgrading.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Saul, and, Council, Madame Venzence?
Thanks for all your hard work on these projects, first of all. And then I want to know, will those, will there be ramps there accessible to wheelchairs?
Yes, they have to be accessible, yes, ma'am.
Okay, any more question from Council?
No.
I'm ready for motion. Councilman Gro?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the purchase. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the purchase of restrooms from Sourcewell for the Pecan Park and Buffalo Ridge Parks.
Thank you, Council. Grow. And Mr. Brandwee.
That would be for a second.
Okay, we already have a second now, please Russia, you vote, if you have no comment. Item number eight unanimous approved. Now we need to move number nine. Resolution number R dash two zero one nine dash zero eleven dash zero four, and Officer Barton? Oh, you Officer Barton? I'm sorry.
I play many roles, sir.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Chief.
Dr. Mayor Trong, City Council, I'm gonna see how good of a salesman I am, I'm gonna try to pitch you a sell for some free money, so we'll see how it goes. I wanna begin, we go through a process every year with the state and some federal governments for grants. And recently, I tasked one of our officers, Officer Brandy Perkins, with trying to spread her horizons a little bit, and she, right now, she's batting a thousand. For all three grants she has wrote, she has got eighty thousand dollars every three, every year. So this is our third grant for eighty thousand dollars for equipment we need for the police department. Her next one's coming up in September, and it's to replace all of our car radio systems that are outdated, that'll be end of life in 2020, and that's almost another eighty thousand dollars that she's gonna get then, that we've already been told that it's looking very positive. So I just wanna give her a little bit of shout-out on that. A little background on this, beginning of the fiscal year of nineteen, the state put out a applications for grants for eighty thousand dollars for equipment. We utilized some in-house, I guess, elimination of what people needed to get the job done, and we come up with a forensic mapping system that we needed with multi-purposes. The version we currently use is one that I used when we were back in 2001, when we were in traffic to map accident scenes. Everybody understands that when we have a fatality accident or something, the officers go out there and we have to recreate that to determine if any charges are gonna be filed to any of the drivers and to determine fault. That usually ranges, you know, two and a half, three, four hours sometimes, depending on the severity of the accident. This system that we've researched and everybody's going to is a 3D scanner, so it makes that a lot quicker, it's a lot more accurate, and it's got a lot more uses than just traffic accidents. We can use that system for crime scenes inside of houses, inside of backyard, or outside in backyards, I mean, any location we can use these, we can use this 3D scanner now, so it's gonna make our case preparation a lot more fluid and a lot more beneficial to the DA's office when we present any cases to them. So that's a little bit of the background on it. We are awarded the eighty thousand dollar grant in collaboration with the Criminal Justice Division, so our total amount would be seventy-three thousand three hundred and fifty-three dollars and fifty cents. It'll be funded from the F Y twenty nineteen Justice Assistant Grant Program to purchase the forensic mapping system. The recommendation by staff is for the city council to authorize us to enter an agreement with the state to receive those funds. There is no match on those funds, that is one hundred percent from the state. And I'm barred for any questions.
Chief, most of the time eighty thousand dollar, you use it for a particular item, or can you use like, I mean, live jacket, I mean, the bulletproof vest?
We have, and I'll become to y'all with that again, we have a possibility for vest is, we have a partnership with possible with Dickies, that they're willing to fund seventy-eight vest for everybody in the police department at one time. If that happens, the only downside to that is, at year five, when these vests expire, we're gonna have to come up with the funding or plan out to save that funding for year five to replace those vests. They're about thirteen hundred dollars apiece. There are vest grants that we are currently in, there's a bulletproof vest grant from the federal government where they pay half of the current vest, so out of nine hundred dollars, they pay four hundred and fifty currently. And then there's also a state grant for our rifle-resistant plate carriers that we wear now.
Thank you. Council, you have any question for us, chief? Councilman Grow?
Yeah, just about the mapping gear, I guess it's a device that sits on like a tripod or something, and then shoots a laser and rotates three sixty to map, I just want so people understand.
It comes with, it comes with that, it's also the software on the backend, it's a FARO technology, so it's the 3D mapping software on the backside, so you get a 3D recreation of the crime scene.
Okay, thank you, I just want to, so people can understand what they're buying.
Yeah, and if you wanna look it up, it's F A R O technology, and it shows you the system and some of the uses that it has.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Grow, and any more question? If you don't have one, go ahead, ready for motion? Thank you, chief.
Let's see if it worked.
You do a good job.
Alright, thanks.
I'm sorry, Officer Barton?
Well, it was hard to talk Greg and their little show earlier, so we'll see.
Okay, I'm ready for the motion, and Councilman Grow?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve Resolution Romeo dash two zero one nine dash zero one one dash zero four for the Justice Assistant Grant fiscal year twenty nineteen for forensic mapping system project.
Thank you, sir, and Ms. Thompson?
Mayor, that would be for a second.
Okay, we got second, and you have any more question? If not, Russia, you vote, please. Item number nine unanimous approved, and now we move to number ten, Ethics Commission. By the way, before we move in this one, discuss about this one one more time, we thank you, the voter approved for Ethics Commission, I think this is very important. Because in the past, if you have problem, you don't know where to go to. If you want to complain down to all the agency, good luck, you know, take a long time. So Ethics Commission have us and the citizens communicate is shorter. If you have problem with any elected official, Ethics Commission can take care of that. Instead of you coming out of podium and attack somebody, just make complaint to Ethics Commission, they will take care of it. But before this one can be done properly, we need to form the Ethics Group, right? At this moment... Okay. Ms. Marion, go ahead, you know this one more than me.
Thank you. As he said, the creation of the Ethics Commission is now required by the Charter. And having served on the Charter Review Committee, the subcommittee that studied the creating an Ethics Commission, I have a few suggestions to start with, and then afterwards, open it for discussion, because I know you all have ideas about what we should do and how to do it. But having been on that committee and then doing the research, here's what I have to offer to start with. First, I suggest that the council appoint a temporary committee to develop the ordinance for the council to approve that provides all the guidelines, bylaws, membership rules, processes, and the flow of the work of the commission. Because much of the research was done by the Charter Subcommittee, I suggest that members of that Subcommittee be part of this temporary development team. Those members are Suzanne Norris, Britt Ford, and Don LaMester. Also, I have two other persons that I've talked to about this quite a bit that I think would provide a fresh and objective view, having not been involved in it before. And those two people are Penny Clowers and Lisa Mays. And so now I'm opening that up, so basically I'm saying appoint a committee, a temporary committee with at least five members, but there could be more if the council desires. But the primary three would be the ones that were on the Subcommittee that studied it to start with, and then we want fresh outlooks on it as well, to think of other ideas. And that would be Penny and Lisa.
Thank you, I think a pretty good start, by the way, Councilman Brandwee?
I totally agree with that, and if you'd make it a motion, I would second that motion, because I think it's something that needs to be done. I think the people that worked on it should be allowed to make that ordinance for us.
How about Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor, I think that our citizens reviewed the information that they were given during the election and along with several other amendments to our Charter, and I believe that we should follow through with presenting and finalizing the commission as we've been directed by our citizens who voted. So, I have no problem, and I fully believe, and I want people to understand that Marion Hillard was also on that Subcommittee with Mr. Britt Ford, Suzanne Norris, and Don LaMester. So, I have no issues with that happening.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson, by the way, I would like to ask Ms. Marion Hillard, you have experience on this, what kind timeframe we have? It is a temporary board, we'll search for how many month to create the, you know, permanent one? And say one month, two month, or what? What's your idea?
I really haven't set a timeline. What I thought is that we could give them a possible timeline of two months, but there's a lot of investigation, not only what we've already done, because we have some pretty good patterns that we've already found, but there may be others out there that need to be looked at that would work better for us. And even if we use the template that's already out there, we would want to make some modifications. So, I don't wanna put too much pressure on them to get it done too quickly, but I thought maybe if we put two months and then let them tell us where they are in the process, and then we could extend it.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, because we don't want timeframe, you know, pressure them, but by the way, you can inform the council, you know, during the meeting, what's going on, how much more time you need, and what need to be done. And Ms. Thompson, go ahead, ma'am.
Yes, I wanted to interrate that whatever is done, that it be reviewed by legal counsel, need to be guided by that as well.
By the way, during the, any meeting of the temporary group here, do we need the city attorney involved, or no?
I think that as the Subcommittee gets so far along in their process, they're going to want to talk with the city attorney, just to see where they are and what they can and can't do.
Because I don't want duplicate the work after you already created the permanent one, and city attorney can reject some item based on the law, something like this, I think
Yes.
the best way to have the attorney there, you know, what do you think, Ms. Austin?
We're kinda just, we're attempting a procedure here, it's kinda hard to know in advance how it's gonna play out, but my initial thought is that we let the committee meet together without our office, come up with some plans, formulate the ideas that they've got. But somewhere along the way, once they get a template on what they're suggesting, we ought to be brought into the process and give them advice on whether or not there are problems with any of the approaches they're considering, and certainly we gotta weigh in before they make their recommendation to the council for approval of an ordinance.
I agree.
Thank you, and Council?
Yes.
You think okay?
Perfect.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there is a case, this time we go ahead and make a motion, right? To...
Well, first, we need to decide if the members that I've suggested for this Subcommittee is all that we need, or do you want more?
If we make it a motion?
I will.
I think five would be plenty, plus you, plus you being there.
I am on it.
Okay. All the council agree, five member? Yes? How about Ms. Grow? Go ahead. Okay, okay, you can make a motion with the five council member on the temporary group, okay?
Five members.
Okay, five, I'm sorry, five member.
Five thousand.
Because I work with Council, I don't know anybody else, so...
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
I move that to create the new Ethics Commission.
Okay.
A temporary committee be formed, composed of the members of Suzanne Norris, Britt Ford, Don LaMester, Penny Clowers, and Lisa Mays be developed, and that they have a two-month period to kind of develop their strategy and how they're gonna proceed, and present it to the council, and then go from there.
Council, you have any problem?
Develop everything.
No, and go ahead, I need the second. Ms. Wees?
Go ahead, sir.
That'd be for a second.
Okay, before we take a vote, any more comment? No, thank you. Now, Russia, you vote, please. Okay, item number ten, Ethics Commission, Ethics Commission passed unanimously, thank you. Okay. Now, my turn, assignment of council liaisons.
Hey, Mayor.
Mayor, we have a, I believe we had a correction on a couple of these. We needed to make sure that people understand the difference between a council contact and a council liaison. The Planning and Zoning Commission and the Zoning Board of Adjustments requires a liaison, am I right, Glenna, on that? But the others just need, in a sense, a contact person. Bob Watkins had came up earlier, and it made the situation on the Animal Advisory Committee is not gonna, doesn't have, well, does have a council member serve, is that correct? Has a council member serving on that committee, so that would be someone to take that. But the others, the Beautification Board, Fire Services Board, Library, Parks and Recs, those four boards just need a contact, that's what we need, just someone who attends a meeting and can relate back and keep a contact with the council to these boards.
Okay, the, I see the responsibility of council contact person or council liaison, they are the same, right, Ms. Attorney? Can we appoint each board a liaison, or no? Why only have two?
Mayor, we're not set up, your current code of ordinances doesn't set up to appoint liaisons for each board, we can certainly amend the ordinance to do that, that's an option you have, but that's not currently what the process is.
Okay. All the council comment? Ms. Hillier?
We should go with what Art said. We just, over history, we've just used the term liaison for the council member to attend these board meetings and just kind of observe what's going on, and let them ask some questions if they want to, but just basically not a member of that board. However, the Animal Advisory is different, in that that person is actually a member of the board.
So, Mayor, what your city code says right now is, the mayor and city council shall assign city council liaisons to the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Zoning Board of Adjustment. The purpose of liaisons will be to serve as a link of communications between the designated board and the city council at large. Council liaisons report on the various activities of the assigned board to the city council and return status reports of city council action regarding the board back to the board members. Council liaisons shall communicate the goals and objectives established by the city to assist board members in formulating their goals and objectives consistently with those of the city. You also have a provision that says every board and commission of the city not assigned a council liaison pursuant to the provisions of this division may be assigned a council contact person. City council shall select from among its members a contact person whom the board or commission may call upon to advise such board on city council goals and objectives. The council contact person shall not be required to attend the meetings of his or her respective board, nor shall the council contact person have the right to decide or vote on issues before such board.
Okay. Right now, you, the council want to stay with the same thing, right?
Yes, if we want to change that in the future, we can, but right now, you appoint a liaison to the Board of Adjustment and Planning and Zoning Commission only.
Right now, we stay with the whole plan. Ms. Brandwee?
Yes, sir, because we just literally created it. As I mentioned, Ethics Commission, and she'll have the contact person, Marion Hillier, because now that she's on... she'll have the contact person, Marion Hillier, because now that she's on council, I don't know if she'd want to do that one. I'm sure she would.
Which one?
The Ethics Commission that we just created, the ordinance we just created? The Ethics Commission, we'll need a contact person for that.
Just for the temporary.
Just for the temporary?
Temporary. We need a contact person or no?
I would, just because of what's going on with, with what they're going to be doing.
You, you can do that if you want. It's, it's not covered by your ordinance. The purpose of council contacts is for permanent boards and your Ethics Commission Creation Committee is not a permanent board, but if you want to have a contact person for that, certainly you're capable of doing it.
I definitely would, just because I would like to know what kind of going on and where, where we're at in the process.
Ms. Benzema, Ms. Saul. I need to hear everybody before we take an action, motion. Go ahead, ma'am.
I'm a little bit confused.
Okay. Not, not normal for a rookie.
Thank you. I am a rookie, so I'm allowed to be confused. But, so my understanding was, I was misunderstanding. According to what the attorney just said, my understanding was that all of the representatives from the council to the boards were liaisons and we are not. We are contact.
Contact.
Persons, except for the two that were mentioned. So is that correct?
Yeah, only, only two board, the Planning, Zoning, and ZBA.
Right. So are the contact people going to be named tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
And in the future, we might change, but not right now.
All right. Thank you.
And you have any more question? If not, go ahead, ma'am.
I do have one comment, and thank you, Brent, very much for making that offer that my heart said in the beginning I wanted to do, but then, as I've been thinking about that, not to toot my own horn, but I'm a little bit pushy. And so...
You say you are a little bit pushy?
Okay, guys.
I think you are.
I admitted it. You don't have to push it down any further. But knowing that, I, I don't want to get in a position where, knowing how I am, that I would be pushing them the direction I want them to go. I really would rather that somebody else be that contact for them, that would have a fresh, open attitude about it. To give credit where credit belongs, Linda first brought this idea to me, so perhaps Lynn might be the best one, if she's not as pushy as I am, to be their guide.
Okay. Ms. Marion Hill, you mentioned about Ethic Committee, right? I think Lynn will be okay, Lynn? Okay. Now, okay, I want to, okay, let's see now. I want to make a, okay. I'm sorry. Ms. Benzema?
Yes, so since if we were contacts, though, we still have the opportunity to go and attend all the meetings, we just would have no voice inside the meeting. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. The normal rule, the council contact could attend the meeting, not required to. Purpose of the council contact is for the board and commission to communicate with you on issues or ask you questions if they have questions. But you certainly can't attend the meetings, but you would not participate in the meetings. You would basically be observing and then reporting back to the council from time to time on what the current issues are with those boards.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more question? If not, I will. Ms. Grow, you have questions?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Now I have the name of person contact and liaison council. We will vote one time, you know, because it's a long time and people need to go home anyway. By the way, the first I will appoint the council liaison for Planning and Zoning, Marion Hillers, and Zone ZBA, Marion Hillers, okay? And the Ethic Commission, Council Linda Thompson, Animal Advisory, Marion Hillier, Beautification, Susan Saul, Fire Service Board, I believe, Mr. Brandwi. And Library Board, Mr. Water Grove, Park and Recreation Board, Water Grove. And I believe that's it. And at this time, ready for motion. Ms. Council Grow?
Ms. Marion, I make a motion that we approve your slate of boards and commissions appointment for liaisons and contacts.
Thank you, Ms. Grow. And a second, Lynn Thompson?
That would be for a second, Mayor.
Okay, we got a second. If you have no more comment, go ahead, Russia, your vote, please. Okay, item number 11, Assignment of Council Liaison and Contact, unanimous approval. Now, the city staff report. You have one? Yes, ma'am. Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just follow-up from two questions that were brought up whenever we discussed our tax assessor collector collection agreement. One of the questions was, what is the $2 out-of-city limit amount that's part of the agreement? That is part of the agreement because it pertains to other cities. We currently do not have any residents that fall within the collection means that are termed out of the city. So that really relates to other cities that, that border towns where they have out-of-city limit collections. The other question was, what are the investments of the agency that does the collections? They are merely a pass-through, so all of the funds that are collected through them are transmitted on a daily basis to the city as those collections come in. So hopefully, that answers any questions that you had.
You have any question? Ms. Thompson, go ahead, ma'am.
Ms. Spouse, could you explain that in relationship to the cities, what you're talking about that is out of the area? Maybe give some examples so that people understand exactly what you're meaning.
I, I don't know the exact cities that that pertains to. They, they create one agreement that's given to all the cities, but there are certain cities that have residents that fall out of the city limits. Our city, all of our residents are within the city limits that are collected through the appraisal district. I'd have to give you, I'd have to get with them and get a list of those examples for specifics.
I was just thinking of one, and the one I think of right off, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, would be Fort Worth.
Correct.
Would that be correct?
Yes.
Because on down 35, they have taken areas.
Well, usually, it's unincorporated lands where a bigger city might have aspirations of maybe in the future annexing it, but what they do is they have zoning rights to it. And so they, they basically administer it without being a part of the city. And so then, down the road, they say, hey, we're going to annex you. And so then, that's where court battles happen in all good times.
Thank you. Any more question? Ms. Hillier, Marion, your turn, ma'am.
Yes. You know, I, sorry. I, I'm a little more confused, though, because what I'm talking about is the agreement we made with the tax assessor collector, where we have to pay them to collect our property taxes. And we pay 99 cents for county, I think it's county, owners within the county, but owners, and the question, and $2 for owners, let's just say county as a, just to get this picture a little bit. But we have to pay $2 for property owners of Halton City property that live out of the county. Why? What is the difference in mailing that letter to Fort Worth versus sending it to Parker County?
I was told the $2 fee does not pertain to us. That, that pertains to other cities that have those jurisdictions. We're only charged the, the single fee and we don't pay the $2 fee at all.
Okay, I, I didn't read it that way at all. I didn't see that exclusion or explanation in that document. That's why I was wondering.
It's basically a form document that's mailed to all cities, so the cities it pertains to would pay that fee, but our city does not because that fee does not pertain to our city.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any more question? Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. Now, we move to the future agenda item. Any council have anything you want to put on next meeting? Water Grove, Ms. Grow?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think we're going to have to read, this is going to be from Ms. Bachelor, so pay attention. The club, it's 2010, it's out of date. I don't know when it was revised, but I think we need to, well, I know, I'm sure there was some revision, but 2010 was a club, and so we need to have, I guess, your suggestion about getting a board or however that thing was done back in 2010 and start the process again because, you know, decades passed or, and it's time to update it to meet what, what are the conditions of the market and, and what is happening. And then also, if, I don't know if it could be done at the same time, but looking at overlay districts. For parts of Halton City, so the one just comes to the top of mind is the area where the Halton Theater is.
Bellknap.
It's, yeah, it's art deco and maybe looking at anything from Markham East, have an art deco look, and then look at the types of businesses and the ethnic makeup of those areas and try to fit East Bellknap, because I remember, I think, in one of the, many suggestions of what to do along East Bellknap was like International Corridor or something?
We do have the Bellknap Corridor, Envision Bellknap.
Yep. And so there, I know there was like three or four of those things. And start looking at implementing something so that we have an overlay district to say if there's any new businesses, or have a grant system to have people update their facades to meet the overlay district, so everything kind of matches instead of a hodgepodge of different things.
Well, the Bellknap Overlay District already is in place, and of course, we have the Property Enhancement Grant Program.
Yeah, I know.
As far as the club, we did mention that at budget preliminary with staff.
Okay.
And that's going to be in the 2020.
Okay, very good. So do we, do we need to workshop it, or you're, we're good?
Not at this point.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. So, Mayor, I'm, I'm good. So nothing to add to the future agenda item.
Okay. Ms. Lynn Thompson?
Yes, I would like for us to revisit the boards and commissions, the process, the applications and the requirements to be on boards and commissions. I don't know if we want to go put it in workshop again or go actually and put it as an action item. I don't know which way to go with that, but I do believe there should be more discussion in developing this.
You're talking about commissioner, right? Board member or?
Individuals that apply to be, whether it's a board or a commission. I think that we need to have our applications updated. There should be information stated on that. I think that we should be doing background checks, things of that nature, so that when we have someone appointed to a board, the process, it would already be vetted before we ever see it, so that we know when we receive these, that they indeed have lived in the city for 12 months or a year, that we don't have to be subjected to trying to police and figure out what we're dealing with.
Okay, I agree with that, and moreover, so far, the nominate for the board members tonight, most of them are the interviewed by me or maybe a council member. In the past, one council member or somebody just throw piece of paper and say, everybody agree? No, it's no more. Especially if any commissioner served in public from this building right here, sit up here, required to wear a coat. You don't wear shirt, blue jean, or nothing. We need to respect the council member. And also, the citizen, I would like to ask you, try to comply my policy, not wear short or tank top while in this chamber, because many lawyer or consultant, engineer, or the people from, like, for example, like BISD, they come in here with necktie. And if you are short, you disrespect them so bad. And especially our city have the cable television, that make a difference. Even our city old, 20 years older than all the city, but we show them, doesn't matter. The look outside don't make a difference. The inside is more important. I just ask people, you know, please comply with me. By the way, if the person with medical issue, that different. The doctor say you can wear short, don't wear short. You can't wear the regular shirt. You have to wear tank top during the winter time. That's fine to me, you know? And, but I just ask, please, you know, comply with our policy. Try to make everybody feel like we respect them and they are respecting us, and thank you so much. Okay, now, we go back to our business again. Now, the, if there is no more future agenda from council, we move to item number 14, resignation of the board. Any member, have anybody resign or something like that? You say yes, Ms. Thompson?
Yes, we had two resignations.
Okay.
We have a resignation.
Ms. Lynn Thompson? On what, what place?
Joseph Springfield, place one.
Place one? You don't know anybody from?
Okay, we have, we have, we have Joseph Springfield, place one. He resigned from the ZBA.
ZBA, yes, I got it.
And you have to approve that one. And then Garrett Sheeler submitted his resignation from the Beautification Board. He's in place eight, which is your appointment.
Okay.
So you have two resignations to approve tonight.
Okay, the, the name already there, and go ahead, Russia, your vote. We ready to make a motion? Go ahead, make a motion.
Okay.
Somebody make a motion, somebody needs to make a motion.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Make a motion, please.
I make a motion that we approve the resignations of Joseph Springfield and Garrett Scheimer?
Scheimer.
Scheimer? Sorry.
I need a second?
That's a second.
Yes. Go ahead, Russia, your vote, please. Okay, unanimous, approve resignation of two board member. Anymore? Ms. Thompson, you have one? No. And now, we move to item number 15, Appointments and Reappointments. Any of you have anything? Yes, ma'am. Go ahead, Ms. Susan Saul.
I'm going to do this as a group. For all of the place five positions, I'm going to read off my appointments and reappointments. Beautification Board, place five, I'm reappointing Bertie Blocker. Crime Control and Prevention District Board, place five, I'm appointing Jana, I'm not sure if I'm going to pronounce this right, Kristofek. I'm reappointing Gary Blocker to the Economic Development Corporation, place five. I'm appointing Betty Porter to the Fire Services Board, place five, to finish out the current term, which ends in 2020. I'm reappointing Pat C. Sullivan to the Library Board, place five. I'm reappointing Penny Clowers to Park and Recreation Board, place five. I'm appointing Leslie Rams, Ramsby to the Planning and Zoning Commission, place five. I'm appointing Jana Kristofek to the Red Light Camera Citizens Advisory Committee, place five. And I'm reappointing Larry Pinkerton to the Zoning Board of Adjustment, place five. That's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, go ahead, Russia, your vote, please.
Yes. Yes, ZBA.
Okay, unanimous approval for reappointment. And anyone else? Mr. Marion Hillier?
Yeah.
Yes. I need to, uh, appoint for the beautification board, Andre LaMaster. For the CCPD red light, Sarah Garrett. Reappoint Betty Bron- Bronsted for the library board. And, uh, Bob Watkins for ZBA.
Okay, go ahead, Russia, your vote, please. Okay, unanimous approval for play number one, and, Miss Crowe.
Okay, I have some new appointments and reappointments for planning and zoning. Scott Lindgren. Parks and Rec, Troy Dunn. Beautification Board, Tony Holmes. Library, Claire Juarez. ZBA, Susan Orr. And CCPD, Steve Chapman. And Fire Services, Debbie Geltmeier.
Please, Russia, your vote. Unanimous approval for play number two. Now, uh, number three, Miss Lynn Thompson, you have any appointment? No. How about you, sir? No. You done? Mr. Benzema, go ahead, ma'am.
Yes, I'm reappointing all of the places that you had originally appointed after talking with the chairman.
I forgot, Jose.
I will be happy to read that list to you, Mayor. That is beautification board, Kay Romic. The CCP would be Patty Street. EDC is Troy Dunn. Fire Services is Francesca Stokes. Library, Donna Peterson. Parks and Recreation, Don the Master. Planning and zoning, Suzette Teague. And zoning board will be Ollie Anderson.
Thank you, ma'am. Go ahead, Russia, your vote, please. Okay, unanimous approval for play number seven. Now, number eight, that may. Okay, the voter already approved, uh, to amend our civil service commission by increasing the membership from three to five commissioner and adding two alternates. Okay, at this moment, this is appointed by the mayor, so two additional member will be, first one, Jennifer Alcon. Second one, Lisa Mace. And two alternate, Kay Kromich and Dario Juarez. Juarez? Com- Comosta? Juarez? Okay. Muchas gracias, señor. Okay, now, I re, uh, go, go, go ahead, Russia, you, oh, I don't have Russia, you might, no, no. Do we have to? Okay, council, go ahead, approve my appointment. Okay, unanimous approval for the, uh, new civil service commissioner. By the way, I reappoint council Watercrow for EDC. And go ahead, Russia, your vote. Are you okay, Miss Crowe?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You are. Okay, he abstained, so we have sick approval and it's passed. Now the tax increasement, reinvestment zone board. I appoint Lynn Thompson, play one. And reappoint Watercrow, play number two. Please, Russia, your vote. Okay, uh, we have four out of six, whatever, of subs-. Okay, we got four approval. Thank you. At this moment, if there is no appointment or reappointment, we move to numbers sixteen. Attendance requirement.
Mayor Ricky Brown sent me a text this morning. He was on a motorcycle trip, and his trip apparently was, uh, held longer than what he could, uh, be able to get back, so he was unable to attend tonight.
Yeah, I need a motion. Go ahead. Please make a motion, Miss Wees.
I make a motion that we approve Councilman Ricky Brown's absence.
A second?
A second.
Miss Crowe?
Yes.
Okay, Russia, your vote, please. Okay, unanimous approval absent of, uh, Miss Ricky Brown. And now, we have the executive session, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay. Uh, at this moment, we have a special announcement from, uh, council, uh, Wees. Go ahead, sir.
Hey, Chaplain, I'm gonna put you on the spot, if you don't mind, sir. I'm gonna ask for you to pray for the families that I'm about to mention. Um, we lost, um, this week, on June fifth, we lost, uh, Jack Dias. He was a council member as well as a mayor pro temp for one term. He served from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and sixteen. As well as Grand Prairie, he lost one of their officers on Friday, uh, A.J. Castaneda. Uh, he was very well-loved and involved in his community. We could just take a moment to, uh, remember these people, and then, Chaplain, if you don't mind coming up and praying for him, I appreciate it.
Ah, Father, we don't, uh, understand all this all the time, Lord, and, uh, so we do pray for the families that are involved in this, uh, the Dice family. I just pray you strengthen them, Lord, uh, the officer in Grand Prairie, that, that's, uh, that's one of those that just, we don't get. But we do know that you're bigger than us, uh. We just ask that you, uh, will bring a little understanding where there's been none. I pray that you bring some peace where there's been turmoil. And, uh, we just ask that you, uh, do give that understanding that's beyond our comprehension. So, uh, we release this family to you, God, and, uh, we remember them, and we thank you for them, man.
Thank you, Chaplain. Okay, now, uh, no attendant requirement. Now, we, uh, we have executive session, right? Okay, we are now moving to the executive session, be on chapter, uh, section five-five-one dot point zero-seven-one and five-five-one point zero-seven-two. Thank you.